I call this July fourteenth meeting of the York County Planning Commission to order. Uh, are there any additions to the agenda? Nope. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve. I'll second it.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Moving on to election of officers, we are in need of a vice chair. Uh, are there any nominations on the floor?
I would except my term expires in December.
Was that six months?
Yeah. Unless I automatically uh.
She's disgusting.
I mean you can stay until the guy. You've got to make him close too, right?
He's still another year.
He's been another year.
Thank you.
Are you there for Tom interested in serving as vice chair for the planning commission?
I'll have the guy.
I'd be I'd be yeah.
Yeah.
Let's do Mike here, there you go. I'd be interested.
Well well you could nominate him and we could vote and then we could let him know if and if he's amenable to it then he would be and if he turns it down then we'll have to vote again. Okay, so Aubrey's nominating Mike. Marion's laughing because Mike's not here.
That's what happens if you don't attend the meeting.
Um, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, all those in favor of Mike as our vice chair? Anyone opposed?
Not opposed, it's just man he's not.
Well, so.
Yeah, but he's still he's still.
He's asking the chair.
And by by rules of order we'll we will approach him with that and if that doesn't is not does not work for him then we will have to re-vote. But that'll give people time to consider their position if they might want to.
But weren't you interested in his run?
Yeah, you know, if 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 Mike does a lot of good, yeah, I'd more than be hap- be more than happy to do it.
Vote.
Oh, here he comes, wait a minute, we're gonna find out, we're gonna find out real quick.
Man, he's got a lot of drugs too.
Hey guys, I see, I'm glad you come caffeinated, we've just voted you vice chair.
That's if you want.
If you would like.
That's what happens when you're late.
No, so in all in all seriousness, um, we did grant you a vote, but we would need to approach you with it. If you are not comfortable in that position then we will, um, vote again.
You're informed. I'm informed, so I'm good.
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, and moving on two minutes from the last meeting, were there any adjustments or questions?
Wait, wait, does this mean I get to sit closer?
Next one, next one.
Next, okay.
Uh, if there aren't done, is there a motion?
This was for the minutes?
It's for our minutes from our June ninth meeting. I didn't find any issues with what I read over, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Anyone, um, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, moving on to our first order of business tonight, which is our public hearing, um. Are you present, Matthew and Marion? So we'll have our presentations and then if there's anyone here to speak for or against, uh, we'll open the floor at that point.
Okay.
Our first public hearing tonight, our only public hearing tonight, is for Murphy USA, gas station that's coming in at the corner of Pleasant and Gold Hill. And they're requiring driveway separation, uh, waiver for from the three twenty-five requirement on Gold Hill. Go through the map here, this is the vicinity map. You see it's the two lots, there's now one lot on the corner of Gold Hill and Pleasant. Uh, probably looks familiar, it was rezoned to G C recently, so they could do the gas station. And you'll notice there along the frontage on Gold Hill, it's relatively short, there's not a lot of frontage there. There's a zoning, G C, all the way around the corner, you have N C around it, G C in the publics, and then that A G C up there is the payway.
Okay.
And here are the separations, so I pulled out the, um, their exhibit. It's two hundred and nine, two hundred and ten feet from the founders, uh, driveway and then two hundred and cannot see around the corner.
About fifty five.
Fifty five, fifty six.
Uh, two hundred and fifty-six from, uh, Pleasant. Three hundred and twenty-five is required, so they're requiring two, uh, waivers to be linked. Um, they went through the planning and a T I A, this is the only location S E T O T will let them have, uh, access. So they wanna create a new driveway, there is an existing old residential driveway they've cut, but it, uh, change of use, it has to be commercial standards, um, so.
It's even closer to the corner. It appears to be closer to the corner.
At least, yes, yeah. Um, African wishes to create the new driveway, um, to Gold Hill from the subject parcel. Uh, waivers, we have to reduce the the driveway separation there. Um, the median is gonna be required out in the right, there's already a little bit of a concrete median, it's gonna be extended, so there won't be any left in or left out on the project. So African showed the provision of these regulations, which would cause unnecessary hardship. Um, the land development code prohibits any access with three hundred and forty-five foot requirement. It's not a long enough, uh, frontage and the other commercial driveway and there's no, basically, proper code. Uh, so it does meet this requirement, they are effectively blocked. And then, uh, departure made without defeating the intent. Uh, the purpose is to make sure that traffic is safe and flows smoothly, but, uh, Chris Stevens, our transportation planner, reviewed it, looked at the T I A. Um, there's no safety concerns with the median right in right out, uh, situation on this one. So we thought it meets this criteria. So staff recommends approval of the waiver, the numbers are a hundred and fifteen and seventy, those are the amounts you're giving in a flat song. I'll go back to the picture. We have any questions for staff?
You did, Barry, you did say it's just right out only, correct?
Yes, correct. You can kinda see where the concrete ends, um, they're extending it now. And that's not the final design, but it'll be.
Yes, Kate knows that in the morning, it's just unbelievable getting out of there.
It's fun.
It's awesome. I don't know longer than this in the morning, that's that's the problem, it's all the time.
Yeah, that's true.
Is there gonna be an access from Pleasant?
Yes, there is an access right across the street from the Q T. So it's already a commercial intersection, it's a little farther south.
Boom, for sure.
I was trying to see if this.
It's still.
Does it line up with any of the other?
Yes, it lines, actually it's not the Q T, it's the air salon.
Yes, post office.
Okay.
The post office.
Yeah, post office and exit.
Four hundred and fifty feet down from the main intersection.
Yeah.
That is right, yeah.
Can will that be right in right out as well?
That would be that would be able to make left if you left that.
No, I don't think so. I think it's gonna be right in right out.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's so close to that intersection.
Right. The reason I ask is, I think it's screwed across, yeah.
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 That's not.
And I'm I'm sorry, one other question, so what is the place immediately left?
Yes. That's the founders credit union.
Okay. Do you know if there was any discussion about sharing the driveway?
Um, there was no discussion, um, founders credit union was not going to be amenable.
Okay.
They would've had to redesign the entire entry.
Good question.
Well, I I was thinking more.
Unfortunate response.
I was thinking more that shared parking lot space, their entrance exit wouldn't move, right?
Well, it was, um, I believe the amount of cut through traffic. Going down to Pleasant, not to Gold Hill.
Ooh.
I'm sorry, can you can you clarify one more time, so we're talking right in, right out only on Gold Hill as well as Pleasant?
Sounds like. Um, I didn't read that part of T I A, I just read the. That's the that's the latest part of T I A, yeah.
Is, so that was yes?
Yes.
Right in, right out on both.
Okay.
Does that, that helps?
It does. Yeah, the lane on Gold Hill Road that's closest to that property, that's that's a straight through and right hand turn?
Straight through.
It's not just a right hand turn.
Right. Well, so it's actually a right on yield, there's a yield sign there.
Right, so. Down the corner, but he's making like a turn lane.
Mm-hmm.
Speaking.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the translation.
And and those will be the only two access points to the property?
Correct.
Okay.
And they are saving the grand oak tree up on the farm.
Yes.
The vine ways gonna happen.
So the T I A is not gonna require a right hand turn on on Gold Hill? Cause they clean up.
Not yet.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
It's it's still finishing up with three yield.
Okay.
Hmm.
Um. So should we?
Anybody wanna speak for or against it?
Are there any questions before we? As I said, are there any questions of staff before we?
It's a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. So as this is a public hearing, um, we will invite people to come and speak either for or against, um. So they need to come to the podium?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You would just, uh, come to the podium and identify yourself and please figure your address, so anyone? Anyone here? Okay.
Motion to close public hearing?
I was gonna say, yeah, exactly, as there is no one here to speak for or against the proposal, um, is there a motion to close?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, motion to close. Motion to close.
Third second.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Okay. Are there any questions of staff? I have a question, so you said Steven.
Christie.
Chris Stevens looked at this and from a safety standpoint, he felt it was reasonable. I'm concerned living in that area that that is really close to that light.
Yeah.
And that yield, so I fear that, you know, you're you have a line of traffic to get up. So it it will it it often goes well past, not only that, but the bank and, you know, the.
Traffic on the.
Well, it does.
Yeah, banking bank up to the other light.
Exactly, almost up to.
Yeah, so.
I live in T V town.
Yeah, okay, so. That's a pers- I mean, that's a frustration, I feel like, oh, this is in place to help avoid situations like this, um.
So what you're saying is it doesn't even matter if they move it back closer to the founders title, it's still gonna be the same situation?
This is the only location S E T O T will let them have, yeah.
I understand, but if they would consider doing that, it wouldn't seem to make much of a difference.
I mean, like you were sort of asking if there was a way to get that turn lane off the road, you know, like a collector lane into the facility.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Don't, I couldn't imagine the confusion on that though, like.
Yeah, exactly, because people would think that your turn, it would be your turn, because you're so close to the light compared to the yield, um.
If they come up to that, yeah.
Yeah, turn.
Yes. Right. Well, my question was more to the fact that if you created a separate turn lane closer to the light, would that funnel more traffic off Gold Hill Road?
But then you have to get those people making a l- a right out of there, have to get across that lane, that dedicated turn lane to get.
To get.
And there's not enough space between that and the light if it's busy, which is is almost always.
No, I agree. Yeah, I agree.
I think in the mornings, they're gonna go down the Pleasant Road and turn right. They're gonna go out that, I guess. Even even if they have to go to Charlotte or whatever.
Yeah.
It's just, it's gonna be hard to get out of there.
Although it's very hard to get out on the Pleasant Road, especially particularly going.
You can. Yeah, but you're saying that they're not gonna allow it.
Yeah, that's true.
That's the latest one.
Yeah, the latest one is not gonna allow land.
You can't go left.
No, 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 I understand, everything is right.
He's saying maybe this would right, so bypass that light.
Oh, goodness.
I don't, I mean.
It it would be quite the drive to get back, 'cause the extension comes down.
Hmm.
Yeah, your. Probably not.
I'm just saying that if there's too much queue going up the Gold Hill and turning right there at that entrance, they could always come about the Pleasant Road and take that exit out.
If you're gonna.
Luckily nobody's gonna be going there and fast.
Yeah.
You hope.
Yeah, second.
Hmm.
But they're not gonna be able to turn left at that one either, so we're good.
Yeah. Okay, so is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Also. Was there any discussion?
Hmm.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve and it's been seconded, no discussion, is, uh, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Um, here passes.
Do we know if any of our, the question either we don't or we do.
And we appreciate that.
Yes.
So moving on to our first rezoning of the night, um. Rezoning twenty-five twenty-four Patrick Traynor applicant, the Aberman family LLC owner requesting to rezone a seven point two acre parcel from I D to B C. The subject parcel is located at thirteen sixty-five West Main Street in Rock Hill. And the prop- property is referenced as tax number five nine five zero 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 one three five, count, uh, council district four.
Yes, so this is case twenty-five twenty-four, this is, uh, west of downtown Rock Hill on Main Street in kind of a donut hole jurisdiction.
Yeah.
So the applicant, uh, proposes to build a self-storage facility with space for boat and RV storage. Um, you can see the lot is kind of changed in shape, it's kind of cut out, um, southern industrial use lot, makes kind of the middle of it. Uh, south side is mostly, um, unusable, th- there's actually a stream system that kind of cuts along that east side. Um, and there's currently a vacant storefront and that built in there. So here's their site plan, um, again, they're kind of sticking to that, uh, northwestern corner, using the, um, already built, uh, structure that's there and also building some more, um, that are being outdoor boat storage. So that is currently zoned, it is zoned for, um, industrial development. Uh, you'll see right along this stretch, there's a lot of commercial, um, almost all of our commercial zones are represented here, uh, with neighborhood commercial, general, um, office institutional, and then it's some more I D. And our future land use, uh, this whole area is municipal infill, you can see this is kind of a whole donut hole, a lot of large li- uh, businesses and residences here, uh, surrounded by a lot of the suburbs in Rock Hill. Excuse all the yellow, uh, city of Rock Hill's future land use has this all entirely neighborhood residential. And you can kind of think of this as roughly equivalent to our single-family residential, uh, designation. The other red line you see there, um, is relevant to their, uh, twenty thirty redevelopment area they have, um, they're looking to redevelop a lot of the corridor along Cherry Road to more commercial uses, but, uh, this property is just outside of that. So we recommend approval of this request, it does not align with Rock Hill's future land, uh, map and therefore does not align with our comprehensive plan. However, the stretch of West Main Street is predominated by industrial commercial uses and this G C zone is much less intense than the current I D zone and would allow potential uses of the property for better service surrounding residences. Any questions for staff?
I got one, please, uh. So on page thirty-two, it shows the, kind of like the colored site plan, the whole layout. Uh, and it's got several exits, entrances or whatever, and I know we just got through talking about distances between exits and entrances, so can can we talk a little bit about the detail of this?
Um, for my turn, it's not the definitive site plan, um, you can see that it's just sketch of a G A S, and they just wanted to give some impression of where they're thinking of, um, especially putting the boat and RV outdoor storage elements. More than likely, like you said, boats will not remain as they are. Um, I think actually that's, some of those are currently existing, those entrances and exits you see on the road, um. I actually don't know when that storefront was made, but it's been brought up for some time, so.
So are those in the black lines potential and this farther down is actual?
So I believe that what is the hollow black line, I think already exists, um, and some of that which is hatched is expected, uh.
Do you have the previous, if you back up one more time, I think it's.
Yeah, so you can see a little bit of the, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Kind of, they're, uh, ground. Well, where are they, wherever they are.
But when they go, they'll they'll still be a site plan, that's basically what I was gonna get hold of and check, you know?
Yeah, it's very much just a rough sketch plan, I believe.
Are there any additional questions?
So existing commercial businesses that come out, is there any relationship to?
Uh, it's, uh, yeah, it's currently an industrial, um, site, I believe, but it, um, it has no relationship to, as well.
Thomas, I didn't know, but is a T I A required with this or do we not?
I believe so.
It actually probably won't, given the fact that the very low volume uses are fro- from this this use here, I doubt there will be the threshold for requiring a T I A. It doesn't it doesn't stop us from from closing off or relocating any kind of access points, but there probably will not be a T I A from this this private.
Is that all the industrial across the street there?
Yeah, so they are currently are currently.
Zone, I'm I'm sorry, go back to the picture, so one more back, so we can see across the street, so the two larger white buildings on the left there in the top.
Yes.
That's that's industrial use there, those aren't residences, right?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Okay, there's a motion on the table to approve, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. Uh, our next rezoning of the evening is rezoning twenty-five twenty-nine Chris Kellogg applicant, Ex Farm LLC owner requesting to rezone two parcels that total eleven point five zero acres far of R N X ten to R U D. The subject parcels are located on Dobie's Bridge Road in Fort Mill and the properties are referenced as tax back number seven three eight zero 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 seven and zero zero eight, council district seven.
Yeah, so case twenty-five twenty-nine, um, this, uh, property is just outside, um, Fort Mill jurisdiction, out to the east, um, on that outside by seventy-seven. Um, you can see there's kind of the intersection along Dobie's Bridge, but, um, on a, um, small prop, uh, ex-mart road. So the applicant proposed to repurpose the existing homes and building that venue, there are currently four homes between these two lots. Um, you can see the one for easily here, but there's also one tucked in this corner, there's one in this far corner here, and another one down here. but there's also one tucked in this corner, there's one in this far corner here, and another one down here. Um, most of the slot is taken apart upon, which the applicant intends to um maintain and use as part of the event venue. Uh, so here's a quick site plan they put together. Um, again, the four homes will remain, however, the curb cuts onto Dobie's Bridge Road will be removed. Um, and access will be exclusively off of Ex Farm Road, where you can see that parking area in the north, um, and the new structure will be the actual venue itself. The homes will be repurposed and used for um other accessory uses within the venue uh venue. So, as it is now, it's currently zoned for RMX ten, um, and you can see that kind of this side Dobie's Bridge, a lot of RMX ten, but on the other side, there is some RUD. And our future land use has the general area for neighborhood residential. Um, and of course, neighborhood residential, we're looking for um single-family residences, but a lot of it will help protect it well and some commercial uses to help benefit those residences. Uh, I just want to highlight, there's some other non-residential uses in the area. Um, up off Walnut Lane, uh, and Small Mart, um, you've got dentist office, uh, church down at the bottom there, um, all on Dobie's Bridge. But not a lot of residences directly coming off Dobie's Bridge Road in the upper size. So, staff recommends approval of this request, although it does not align with York County's future land use map and conference of plan. Uh, there are a lot of adjacent properties zoned for RUD, as well as several other non-residential uses along Dobie's Bridge Road, and the proposed RUD zone is much less intense than the current RMX ten zone, uh, and will remove two residential curb cuts from Dobie's Bridge. Are there any questions for staff?
So, a couple here, Thomas, so did I hear you correctly that all of the access off of Dobie's Bridge is gonna go away and the only way to access the venue will be off the other road, so.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so that there's two existing structures there that are homes that have driveways and those are just gonna be done away, but the driveways will be.
Right, that's correct.
So, okay. And I can't really tell from the maps very well, but is there anything, we go back, fill in a couple more right there. So, so all of that hashed area kind of behind it between Fort Mill and Parkway and Williams, are there any homes in there now? And that's all just open?
Yeah, it's just right there.
Right.
Port intersection, yeah.
Okay. And how is that zoned today?
Uh, Fort Mill, they probably have a.
It's P N P N D.
It's a mixed use.
Fort Mill.
Yeah, it's a mixed use.
Yeah, it's just.
That that's how that's, I was trying to figure out how to decipher that, um.
Mixed-use neighborhood.
That's a T D, actually.
Behind it.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, noise ordinance stuck in the county of Fort Mill that might differ from county regulations?
I don't, I don't know what that ordinance is in the county of Fort Mill.
I suppose, but I mean, I can, depending on how much, I think it's eleven o'clock in the county, is that right? Am I remembering that right? Trying to think back to fireworks about two weeks ago, like, um, either eleven or midnight.
I think it's eleven, but we, there are some provisions in our code um for separation requirements if you have any kind of outdoor entertainment, um, any kind of amplified entertainment, and that's all uh in the code itself, for any kind of outdoor entertainment.
It it might be something to make sure they're abundantly aware of as they're doing this, right?
Yes. I'm sure they've read that section of the code.
Because it would be, a noise complaint would wind up the sheriff's department coming, not Fort Mill police. There'd be a lot of confusion because if this team had have done that whole thing, depending on what what their event is and how long. I don't know if they have to, if they have a venue, they don't necessarily have to have a permit from the county to do events, right?
Not a permit for the events, no, sir.
Right, so, okay.
All right.
Thank you. Those are my conclusions.
Any? Any additional questions?
I have one.
Sorry.
Page thirty-nine C, uh, a lot of uses would be compatible with surrounding lighted uses and it kind of piggybacks into our earlier conversation. I find this a little confusing in that it says event venues with capacity of less than hundred and fifty people are permitted, and then with supplemental conditions, any RUD zoning district on parcels greater than ten acres. If the building capacity exceeds a hundred and fifty, one says the event venue and the other one says the building capacity. Are those not two different things?
Would that be like?
Yeah, those would be the same. So, the the capacity of the event center, the best use is based upon how many people can fit in that building.
In the building.
And so, if that, if the building itself can fit with a hundred and fifty, it becomes a special exception.
That's kind of.
Okay.
If it's less than that, it can stay as by rights. Um, the conditions are, the conditions for, like I mentioned, for any kind of outdoor entertainment, there are varieties, just whether it's gonna be one fifty or 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 smaller, that's all the same.
Right, okay. It's based on what the fire code for that square footage.
Correct.
Yeah.
For the building.
For the building.
For the building.
For the building.
Because you can have people outside of the building.
Correct.
Right.
In inside a building has to meet fire code.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, well, splitting hairs here, but so I could have two hundred people show up and only a hundred and fifty of them can go in the building, or does it become a hundred and fifty period?
It's supposed to be whatever the maximum capacity is of the building itself.
Okay.
So, there'll be a maximum capacity label on the building, and that's what it is. And so, the intention is to design the building so that you can keep it under a hundred and fifty, otherwise they have to come back to special exception. I think that's the intention.
So, they have a hundred and forty in the building, but they can have sixty out in the grand, right?
Point, right.
Where you have two hundred people show up, you just can't have more than a hundred and forty in the building.
Right.
Okay, it's not a hundred.
Hundred, you can't have any more than a hundred.
That's.
Right, but to that point, they can have an event outside on the property and.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a good point. I think we we determine the, whether it's the large or not large, based upon the capacity of the building from the center. But you made a good point, you know, you have this large area here, what's the suffering from how many?
An outdoor concert or something.
Yes, yes.
When we talked, wasn't the intention that number, didn't we have, when we talked, when we re.
When we established the um event venue as a use.
Right.
That we established the one fifty would be the.
It's the cutoff.
The cutoff between, that once again, like you're saying, that's determined about the building itself. I don't know that it actually defines how folks come to an event.
Plus the parking area.
That would be determined by that, um, but you can have some overflow parking that's, you know.
Right.
An identified overflow parking. You can't.
Because I I think the question also would be, you've got this huge park and a small building. Somebody's gonna eventually think, well, let's do something around the park and then you have, you know, let's maximize the number of people. So, then they just kind of circumvent going in the building.
Yeah.
Or event venues kind of broad, right?
Yes.
You could have weddings, you could have music, you could have. Four each animals, I guess, I don't know.
So, intention is for a white event, you could have some marching boat races and.
Yeah.
I'm sure, I'm sure that's what the house is.
I'm glad you made it tonight. Thank you, thank you.
I'm thinking of other uses.
Yeah.
So, are there any additional questions that we need clarified before we move forward on this, or is this something that you guys feel comfortable making motion?
Yeah, we can answer if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Clarify a couple things.
Uh, do I have to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, but.
I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone oppose? Moving on to our next rezoning of the evening, which is rezoning twenty-five dash thirty York County Natural Natural Gas Authority applicant owner requesting to rezone two parcels that total twenty-eight acres from AGC and O I to ID. The subject parcels are located on Schlemberger Drive in Fort Mill. The properties are referenced as tax map number seven one four zero 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 one nine and zero twenty, council district seven.
Yeah, so case twenty-five thirty, um, this is north of uh one sixty, uh, the one sixty S seventy-seven interchange and south of Central River, S seventy-seven interchange, um. So, the applicant is looking to repurpose the existing structure to turn it into utilities operations center, uh, include uses such as warehousing, office space, uh, outdoor storage for material equipment vehicles. Um, you can see this is a huge, huge lot on five seventy-seven, um, lots of vacant lands surrounding it, and just across S seventy-seven is more of, um, it is industrial and commercial use. And we see that reflected in our zoning map. Um, currently, this, these two parcels, the large one at the bottom and also that sliver on the other side of Schlemberger are one parcel. Um, and it's actually split zones, the bottom part portion is office institutional, northern portion is AGC, and there's also that, um, the second parcel is that small square that's between those two, um, also S seventy AGC. But you can see across the way, uh, predominantly ID, UD, um, what you would expect for industrial district. And as expected, uh, the area around S seventy-seven, this is all S seventy-seven corridor employment, um. So, we, staff recommend approval of the request. It aligns with York County's future land use map, conference of plan, and the requested zone will allow for and encourage scale character land use as expected within that S seventy-seven corridor employment designation. Um, and there are large natural buffers and ample vegetation to obscure the industrial activities from view of the existing residences. Not that they're any that close, but it's always nice to see. Any questions for staff?
Um, I was reading in here that because they have to, if they exceed five thousand square foot of needed storage outside, that's the reason why I went to ID, correct?
That's correct.
Um, I want to make sure that on ID that, but I don't know, I can't make sure, but I just didn't want them to introduce possible chemicals that could spill in this area because this, I believe this is the sprangy property that's behind that, but to the right there and, um, it springs you stuff, own all the land there, and it's environmentally sensitive, and of course, I see the lake there. Um, I guess my question would be if they were to change any of your original, you know, they went beyond and said, okay, we're gonna bring in chemicals or whatever, um, would the county review all that would be coming on to the parcel? Because in ID, you can, you know, you can have certain amount of chemicals heavy industrial.
Yeah, I mean.
It's a concern of mine, so I've just thought of bringing it up.
Yeah, no, it's every time it's not industrial, it's it's good to bring up. Um, in this case, you know, the applicant is, um, you know, it is, yeah.
Right. It probably won't.
No chemicals is that there.
Because they don't need it, but I'm just saying, you know, would the county review anything that they would add to what was originally approved for ID?
Sure. I don't think that, other than the like fire marshal visiting the building whenever they do their inspections would be probably the only time the county would be entering the property once they, you know, moved into that location. Um, you know, they wouldn't be notified every time, but I would imagine like some fire marshal is visiting every year, and so they would then look at that to make sure they're all contained properly.
Contained, okay, yeah, especially if it's outside.
Yeah. Fire marshal check.
What's the little brown patch down at the bottom, just out of the mark?
Skydiver.
Yeah, the, I guess the road comes through and goes down through, what is, you know what that is?
I do not know what that is.
Oh, yeah. I haven't.
But it looks like it's connected to, I mean, the way that you access that.
I think that's a York um co-op site there, just below that.
Electric car?
Yeah, yeah, so, some kind of a.
Okay.
There are often electric trucks that.
And?
Yeah, there's some kind of electrical power stuff down there.
Mm-hmm.
And any, any kind of buffer yard or anything like that that happens when you do this?
Well, there is the, with going to ID, there's always the expectation of appropriate buffers. Uh, this, this lot is very well buffered, I would.
I was gonna say.
Yeah.
And to ask for an industrial place is a great spot for it.
Yes.
So, so there's no plans to alter what we're seeing here? They're just trying to zone to be able to do the business in the existing building that they.
And if they have outdoor storage, it goes.
I see, okay, okay, all right.
Yeah, there might be some expansion of the the lot, the parking lot and such, but.
Yeah, if you drive by an uncle or a daughter, you know it's there.
Yeah, yeah.
Even seventy-seven.
The only time you see it's on I seventy-seven.
Even there, Tarsia.
Yeah, exactly, maybe you have to know it's there, you know what you're looking at.
Seventy-seven.
It's on the, uh.
No, that that L-shaped building, that's, I mean, you, if you're driving down seventy-seven, you see that building on.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's sort of like.
Right.
That's seventy-seven.
Okay.
Yeah, you see, all you're looking at is sort of like.
Got it.
Yep.
Just trying to figure.
Yeah.
And then that new blank space is a new outdoor, um, building and art and storage.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is, I think we had this discussion a while back about categories we had in ID, and then we had somebody that wanted to go that direction, and we put in some kind of list of these types of things are okay, but these are not, or something along those lines.
Correct, that's correct, that was up at Gold Hill.
Did we, did, did that actually go through the way we talked about it? Cause I can't remember what happened, I remember.
Think they dropped it.
Yeah, that that's been deferred. They never actually went forward with that application.
Think they dropped it.
Okay. I don't know if addressing some of the things you're talking about because I I'm not sure if the applicant is one that you have to be concerned about, but should that property change hands ten years from now and it's designated ID?
Well, they'd have. Yeah, but they'd have to go through the county.
Well, if it's designated ID, they have it by right, so then then the next owner could come in and put a chemical processing plant there, and uh there would be no, no question of anybody just permits to build, right?
Right, right.
Do whatever.
So, if if you have, that might be something to think about, how do you?
But that's why I brought it up.
So, do we have any latitude to narrow that acceptable uses in this rezoning?
Yeah, so what we've done in the past is you have made a young, a recommendation for county council to consider working with the applicant to uh do deed restrictions to limit the number of uses or what uses can go on there. And so, it's been a recommendation, what you would do is you make that recommendation for deed restrictions, the county council, they decide whether or not they want to go forward with that.
Do you, do you have a, a helpful proposal for us of how we might word that?
I do not up and saying that make recommendations for county council to uh consider deed restrictions um for uses that may not be programmed this location.
Not so specifically, leave it broad for them to to look at.
Yes, right, correct.
Okay.
Yes, all right.
Are there any additional questions? Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, with the council considering deed res- rega- recommendation, council, thank you, about, um, um, looking into deed restrictions.
Correct, correct.
Also, I'd like to add into that that the small parcel there would remain AGC because they they put it in here. The authority has no objection if York County wishes to maintain AGC zoning for that smaller parcel, so I'd like that to be uh added.
So, what you'd be doing then is you're denying a portion of that, so you would say, you're denying a portion of the AGC, what you're saying.
Oh, oh, I. No, what, um, oh, I see what you're saying.
That's, that's nothing from any kind of copy combination. I think that would just make it difficult for them, so.
Okay, just, just with the deed restrictions.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone oppose? Okay, moving on.
Um, let's see, next, uh, next rezoning is rezoning twenty five dash thirty one, Robert and Kevin Bowlen, Jennifer Bowlen, Lauren Bowlen and Cody Williams. Requesting to rezone three parcels that total nine point six two acres from RUD to A G C. The subject parcels are located on Allenwood Road in York. The properties are referenced as tax map number one eight seven zero 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 three two one five eight zero 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 one one and zero one six, Council District seven.
So this property, well, group of properties, um, out uh northwest corner of county. Uh, north of Black Highway but south of Highway fifty five, kind of uh, uh, off of Rammer Church Road. It's very, very agriculture out here, uh, very, very empty, big land for the most part. Um, and the idea is to recombine these parcels you see set uh highlighted red with the one in blue. Um, and kind of re-aggravate all those properties to uh later redistribute them. Um, so closer look, these are, these three kind of um auxiliary properties here that we're looking at. Um, they're currently residential, they're being used for for homes. Um, you can kind of see the homes there in each of the areas. And it's currently zoned, the kind of central huge parcel is mostly timberland right now, um, is A G C. And those three, uh, given that they're being used, residences are zoned for rural development. These other two, the kind of triangle wedge you see off of the Aldwood Road there, um, those were actually rezoned, um, from A G C to RUD seven years ago. Um, and now only this one at the bottom is being rezoned back. Um, future land use, all agriculture. So staff recommends approval of the request, as it aligns with our future land use map comprehensive plan. And A G C zone allows for and encourages the scale character that is expected within agriculture designation. Are there any questions for staff?
And other questions? Is there a motion? Make a motion to approve the staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
But we have to add the uh condition.
Yes.
Oh, okay, I got you, okay, thank you, okay, I got you.
So we have a a sec a second.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Sure, second. We do have a motion and a second with staff's recommendation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone oppose? And moving on to our last rezoning of the night, yes. Which would be rezoning twenty five dash thirty two, Amy Bowler, applicant, Thomas Bowler, owner, requesting to rezone a three point four five acre par- parcel from R S F forty to RUD. The pars- uh, subject parcel is located at eighteen thirty one Windsor Woods Drive in York. And the property is referenced as tax map number three nine seven zero 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 one, Council District three.
So this property is off Windsor Woods Drive, um, it's just southeast corner of City of York, off York Highway in York County. So, um, the property used to be owned by uh the Racking Exercise Club. Um, and since the the pool is there and there's also a pool house still on the property, and the applicant is looking to allow for manufactured home to remain on the property. So it's currently zoned for R S F forty, which does allow for manufactured homes. Um, and you can see that most of the um parcels also within this subdivision are the same. Um, but along York Highway and mostly around City of York itself is a lot of RUD properties. According to our future land use, it should be single-family residential. Um, again, where that RUD comes in is that rural residential designation you see all around. We're gonna recommend approval of this request, uh, while it does not align with future land use comprehensive plan. Uh, the nearby properties along York Highway are predominantly zoned RUD. And the other residences within the Windsor Woods subdivision are well above R S F forty minimum size. Um, a lot of them are vacant as well, and the proposed use of this space is to continue to use a watch a lot residential space, um, is compatible with, um, the neighborhood properties. Are there any questions for staff?
When the manufactured homes allowed, just one, something that.
Spot on, that's it. To keep the pool and stuff.
Yeah.
I didn't know if it was gonna be, you know, put three of them in there and then do a new P D and then come to make sure like the pool. Get all that going.
Yeah.
But that you can put more than that on A G C, right? What what am I remembering?
So in A G C you can have two homes, you could have ten acres.
Currently.
Right, right.
Yes, and RUD you can only have one home per lot, yep.
So in A G C it could be theoretically if somebody had ten acres, two million vacuum homes.
Yes.
Um, that's where I got the two.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any questions?
Is it currently in violation? Is there a mobile home on it now?
It's not, it's not in violation.
It's not in violation.
And a property that's just north of it that kind of angles off to the right, is that commercial? Or somebody using that for storage or?
Staff is aware of the, uh, other going south of this area.
Okay, I mean, I'm just curious, because it it looks like this might have been a a reasonable subdivision at some point, but it doesn't look like any of the properties have been sold, right? Or at least nothing's been built on any of the lots between the pool and York Island, so nothing's been built other than whatever is on that. But that is part of the development, right? Is a hall.
I'm sorry?
That is part of the future development.
Thank you, that's my question.
That is, I mean, it was subdivided years ago, it was just never built out, so if they could, there there's lots of record, they could pull homes there. I don't know why they haven't. Any additional questions? Is there a motion? Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we had a motion and a second. All right, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone oppose? Okay, uh, let's see, any questions on the active rezoning cases?
Your favorite part.
And if not, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Have a good night.